July the 15th, 2021, we are called to order. Mr. Lucas, will you do the prayer and pledge, please?
If you'd please stand.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time that we had to come together to make decisions for this city that we all love so much. Help us to make decisions that are best for this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Item five, public hearings. Since the public hearings are attached to the resolutions that we'll be hearing, unless there's something else that someone wants to talk about. Item seven, public announcements. There are none. Oh, wait a minute. I'm so sorry. Item six, citizen comments. Ms. Johnson?
There are none tonight.
Thank you. Public announcements, there are none. Monthly reports from the staff, planning department, Mr. Sullivan? Hello, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. Just a quick update. I have included the last month, so June of 2021, as well as all of the last fiscal year. So far for the year, and I've got a typo on there, that should be through the end of May, we're at 97 residential building permits. We had 15 issued in June. There were several more applied for, but they've been issued now in July, people trying to get through that fiscal year. For the 2021 year, we had 146 total residential building permits. So those were just single-family, new homes, additional that we have, multifamily, commercial, and any renovations, anything like that was not included in the residential, but 146, single-family. For, again, the last year, permit-wise, going straight to the general fund, we brought in $306,528.97 for a general fund, and then $276,094 going to facilities just for residential permits. So permits for the last year have been good. We've done a lot with those. We do have a lot of growth going on. And as you can see, this is where the money from that is coming from. We do have several lots that we've approved recently, several in the last year, that are in construction right now. So we will have several more lots going through the fall and then several into the spring as well. So we do look like everything will continue on a pretty smooth pace. Building valuation, this is where the contractors, when they do their permits, give us their rough estimate of the construction cost, what the home value is, not at sales, but at the building itself. And we were $30,385,000 that have, that's been the improvements of homes in Fairview in the last year. So that's a pretty big number of the improvements that we've seen. Several larger houses that we've seen coming in, so that helps out quite a bit. But we are right there at the $30,385 number of improvements for the year. So, pretty good year last year. Hopefully we have the same going forward in this next, and just keep going from there. Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. Mr. Sullivan, do you know, just off the top of your head, what kind of increase that we've seen this year versus last year with residential building permits?
Last, last summer, we were in the process of going through new permitting software. We went with the IDT software, started that middle of last year. I do not have a way of pulling old permits and new permits and comparing, that's on an old system. We'd have to go back and pull several different sets of records for that. So I don't have a comparison of how many permits we had then versus now, without going into two different systems. But we were able to pull this, and I'm hoping that the monthly reports will be able to continue building off of and see where we are, and then for the next several years, be able to really build off of where we are each year. Thank you. Any other questions?
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chief Hughes?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a report for the month of June. Call volume for the month of June was up quite a bit from last year, which was slow because of COVID, of course. But we ran 102 emergency calls in the month of June. We had two reported building fires that resulted in minor incidents. We had a semi-fire on I-40. We had eight overlapping incidents this month, three automatic mutual aid to surrounding departments, and we had three public education outreach opportunities with 51 interactions. These are some of the statistics we pulled. The average call per day that we're running in June was 3.29 calls a day. Dispatch time to arrival, time average was 5 minutes and 36 seconds from the time we were dispatched to the time we arrived on scene. Average operating on scene time was 14 minutes. Again, if anyone in the city needs smoke alarms installed in their house, just call the department. We'll set up a time to come out and install those. We are still participating in the state's smoke detector program. And then to remind everybody again that if there is an emergency, your first call should always be 911. Please don't call the station. We're not always there. Sometimes we've already been dispatched to it, so we're on the way. So we have people calling, leaving messages on the phone. It's because we've either already been alerted to the call or we're out on another call. The breakdown in calls, again, our new software is reading a little bit different. It says rescue and emergency calls. So the rescue emergencies are going to be car wrecks and BLS medical calls. That's back up to where it was pre-COVID, in the 75% to 78% range. And then the rest of the breakdown is listed up there, but that's going to lead the way most times, has for many, many years now. Next slide, Keith. This is the heat map. Basically, this is a map showing where our call volume is running for the month. So the red areas tell you where we run the most calls in the month, and as they, they're basically go from green, yellow, and orange, then red. That number two right there is where our station is right now. So you can see where our call volume is based on our station. And these are just some pictures of some of the incidents. Training for the month, we had 514 hours of training, and there's the breakdown of the training we're doing each month. I think that's it. Just some training photos. Any questions?
So, since I could not see the red dots and where they were, where are the majority of the calls?
Okay, one of the red dots was out at the interstate at the exit. That's the one that's up on the north side of that picture. And there's a couple of spots. You see one, I think the biggest red dots near the Flying J. The other one that's not quite red, but it's orange, is across the interstate, and that's on the Dixon side. And then we run a lot of wrecks right there on that straightaway on the interstate, kind of getting on the on-ramp. Then we have over on the Brush Creek area, we run a lot of calls to that end of town also. So that's just, like I said, that's just showing our call volume, and that's just for the month of June. So in June, that's what that looks like.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Chief Humphries?
Good afternoon. Quick rundown, staffing for the month. Last month in June was 23. Sad to say that next month, that won't be. We've had a resignation and possibly one more. But we have one on deployment, so that's going to leave us a little challenged there. If you know anybody that would like to serve this community, please send them our way. We are interested. Overtime dropped significantly, down to just two hours overtime last month. Train has dropped a little bit, and that largely fluctuates month to month when we can get our people off-site to a facility such as Dixon to do some training. So that's challenging in some months. We're not able to do that, so our hours fall a little bit. Next slide. The monthly comparison for our calls are self-initiated from the month of May, which was 9:49. Pretty consistent, 9:15 for the month. Stayed close to that in June. Next one. Our rest for the month was down just a little bit to 61. Domestics fell to 1. Zero DUIs for the month. No charges, about the same, and thefts consistent there with eight. Citations were up at 109, and our traffic incidents were 26 total, 25 just property damage, one injury of that. And we're blessed to say, each month I report, no fatalities, and that's been the norm for a while. We hope that stays the case. Next slide. And for our public relations, you know, we did our shop with a cop booth. Our goal is usually $10,000 to pull that off. And through this first fundraiser that we did, we were able to generate $3,510 for that. So we're a third of the way there, and we're pleased with that. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Chief Humphries, if someone would be interested in a job as a police officer for Fairview, how do they go about that?
We have an application posted on our website. They would just send it in, and when we accumulate a few of those, we start the process. We'll reach out and do an interview process and things like that.
Okay, so first they fill out the application?
Yeah, just fill out the application. And if they notice online, for the police department, it's two applications. One is a city application, and one is the police department. They fill out both of those. Because the police department application asked a few additional things based on our line of work, and they need to fill out both of those. But they're both there on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item nine?
Mayor?
Yes.
I know the city manager's not here today. Would it be okay for Richard Ross just to give us a quick rundown of the July 3rd event?
Are you, do you have that information, sir?
Yes, ma'am. I have a little bit of information for you guys. So the estimated total amount of attendees for July 3rd was 14,000. Not everyone was on property, but it was scattered through Publix and then where Dose parking lot is. But we have had nothing but positive remarks about the event, and we cannot thank our staff and all the volunteers for helping us out with the event. It was very successful.
Thank you. Item nine, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Item 10, old business rezoning of Sullivan property on Fairview Boulevard. We will now open the public hearing for that property rezoning. So if there's anyone here to speak on that, this is your opportunity. Hello, sir. Give us your name and your address.
Hello. My name is Chad Warren. I live over at 7114 Glen Haven Drive. Obviously, this property joins up to me on my side yard and my backyard property. I am for growth for Fairview. I'm not for high-density growth for Fairview. That being said, I was raised here and continue to live here. And kind of my reasoning on being that, the future intended use for that property as shown on the 2040 comp plan does not call for the high-density use of the RM12 zoning. However, the RM8 would comply and be currently be allowed with the commercial zoning designated currently to this property. The residential transition neighborhood calls for a mixture of small footprints, residential buildings such as manor homes, townhomes, condos. The MR12 would be strictly more of a multifamily design that would be, that would not result in the intended use. The original concept plan for this project would have the vision, however, the zoning request is not in line with item of the concept plan. I feel as a citizen of Fairview, this type of projects are critical piece of Fairview for us. We need to be aware of the impact of the MR12 plan and the impact that it have on the closeness, that being so close to our schools, our roads, the infrastructure there. You know, just take time to make sure that the city receives in-depth information about the plan that we built. Are critical on building a successful Fairview community here. Obviously, you can tell I'm not for the dense population, but I just ask and encourage this board not to pass the rezoning request for the RM12, seeking additional information regarding what is the final design and product being built. I've kind of followed this along with the MR20 that was requested, and we're back down to the MR12. So I've kind of been following it along. Approving a zoning for MR12, to me, is basically a blank slate for our community. If we zone this for an MR12 and something falls through, that leaves any other developer to come in here. If something was to go south on the developer now, could go completely a different direction. So I just feel like high-density building in the middle of the city of Fairview is not for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
My name is Craig Cropper. I live at 2480 Fairview Boulevard, directly across the street from Ms. Sullivan's property. You know, I want to thank all the council members for talking with me. I talked to each one of you this week. Y'all called me back. Really appreciate it. I guess basically, I'm thinking in the same terms as Chad, you know. One thing I'd like to know is if the concept plan that they have was designed for R12 or R20. You know, so that's going to make a total difference in the whole thing. And the new apartments, I want to point this out, the new apartments over at, I think it's Westway, they're zoned R8, RM8, and then these would be zoned RM12. So I am not against growth, and I, you know, this property's been for sale for a long time. It's probably the premier piece of property in the whole city. You know, it's square, it's 50 acres, and it's in premier location. But, you know, what I don't want, or we, I think my wife included, is we don't want 37 acres of apartments across the street. And in this neighborhood, in such close proximity to the schools, the traffic problem, which would have to impact, I mean, it's already, you know, at 7:00 in the morning and then 4:00 in the afternoon, I can't get down the driveway. So if we add 600 more cars to that, what's that going to, what's that going to end up with? And, you know, I've done just a little research, and these numbers are probably not exact, but just kind of on my own on the internet. So the population of Fairview is 9,460. That was in 2020. So right now existing, there's about 400 apartment units within the city. Now, if there's three people lives in each one of those apartments, that's about 1,200 people. So if for some reason this 37 acres would get rezoned and 400 more apartments be put there, that's doubling our apartment population in one swoop, double, 100%. And I just don't know, already our population, apartment population is about 13% of our total population. And I don't know how that compares to other cities, Nolansville or Franklin, or I hadn't, I don't have no idea. But, you know, I think 13% is not out of line, but I don't know if you double that, you know, it just seems like a little much to me. What I would really like to see is a mix of, you know, if there were some apartments, that'd be great. Single-family homes, duplexes, cottages, condominiums or townhouses that people could purchase and invest in and stay here. Because, you know, most apartment complexes, I mean, that's people moving in for a little while, then they move out and move on someplace else. They buy a house or they do something else. So it's more transient, you know, they're moving all the time. So, you know, if we had a place that would be more, you know, aimed toward property owners, people having their own property ownership. So, you know, it looks to me like the best way to proceed was to do, is to do a PUD or a POD, and I'm not all that familiar. I just have a little bit of understanding of what that would include. So the developer, whoever that is, would have a plan done. So everybody, including citizens, the board, would be able to see where the streets are, where the buildings are, what kind of buildings, how many apartments, how many single-family homes, cottages, duplexes, or whatever. That would all be drawn out. As it is now, if we pass the RM12, it's like buying a pig and a poat. I mean, you don't, we don't have any idea of what we're going to get. And so I would ask that the board not pass this resolution and decline it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you'll tell us, hello, if you'll tell us your name and your address.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Justin Lang. I live at 7217 Cumberland Drive. I emailed each of you yesterday evening. Thank you so much for your prompt replies and thorough and thoughtful replies. A lot of information was shared and a lot of knowledge gained. I'm like my neighbors. I have no opposition to growth. I moved here 10 years ago because it was a wonderful place to raise my family, and that's what I'm doing. And I welcome other families to join us, but the concerns that I have are the same, where we don't know what we're going to get. All I know is that at the back end, the north end of my property, where it's beautiful now, I'm potentially looking at a three-story apartment complex. I'm looking at the traffic, I'm looking at the other items, and it's just very concerning that we just don't have a good understanding of what the future could potentially hold and where this could lead. Now, I know through some of the answers and explanation that there would be opportunities to sway that in certain ways in the future. That's a big risk, and that's a hope. And so we have the ability tonight to change it for what it is, and I'm all for building homes there, but not at this level. And so I'm against it, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Then we will close the public hearing. Are the developers here, proposed developers? Gentlemen, you've heard the concerns. Would you like to address those?
Yes, the first thing is, is that there will have to be obviously a concept plan brought in that you folks will have to approve. Our intention is for exactly what, and thank you for your comments, is exactly what the comments have been, is that single-family, cottage, flats, multifamily, across this whole 37 acres. So it's not, it's not the case that we're going to come in and plop down 400 and some odd apartments in one building on the property. Concern on traffic is, there's already been a traffic study initiated, and it has to be done per city before anything gets approved anyway. Whatever that traffic study says, we obviously have to implement. If it says we have to have turning lanes, we have to have turning lanes. If it says we have to have a signal, then we have to have a signal. The concern also on that traffic side, as you all know, is that this is already zoned general commercial. So the ability, if we don't put in the single-family, the cottages, the apartments, everything else, there could be multiple big-box stores there that could add a tremendous amount of traffic. There was another concern, traffic. The apartments, yeah. And so the only other point I want to make is that there, this is 37 acres for this zoning. So the density will be spread out over 37 acres. It's not the fact that we're trying to put one massive building right up on the front, because we're going to have commercial. And this is what, when we went through planning and zoning, this is actually in a transitional neighborhood on the future use map, which allows for the commercial on the front and some residential. If I ask anything, I'm all ears.
Does the board have any questions?
I have one, Mayor. And forgive me, because this is not my area of expertise by any stretch of the imagination, but it's my understanding that this rezoning, you're still going to have to come back and add potentially another rezoning request.
Yeah, there'll have to be a site plan review that staff will have to review. And so at that point, we'll see exactly the concept with the...
So I guess my question is, why are we, why are we going to do two rezoning requests? Why not just jump to the last rezoning request?
We're trying to get it rezoned, so that way we know what the kind of density we can do. And so therefore, we can allow staff to tell us where they want the streets. We have, we have some of these concept plans, but that takes a tremendous amount of time and effort, whereas at this point, we're just trying to get it rezoned. So then we will bring back all those conceptual plans to you.
Okay, so just, because I might be missing something, and anybody that can jump in if I'm off. But so we're going to potentially vote to rezone tonight.
Yes, sir.
But then we eventually have to vote to re, you're going to have to come back for another rezoning.
There won't be a rezoning. It'll just be a site plan, a plat that you will, that the city will agree to. It won't be a rezoning.
But does the rezoning that you're requesting now fit with what your concept plan is?
Yes, potentially, but that, we're going to let the city guide a lot of that as well. Trying to get to where the amount of apartments, single-family, that all go in there. So it's a, it's a total mixed-use, commercial, and then that as well. There'll be a review that y'all will do.
I think the confusion might be that originally you'd ask for a different zoning and then decided to drop that.
We did, after we listened to, listened to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning said, hey, that's too dense, that's too many. So we came back to planning and zoning and said, okay, we're going to lower this down, and it got cut almost in half. And so at this point, we feel that the amount of apartments we can put in, single-family, flats, cottages, the whole bit, this is the amount of density that we need. And that'll be spread out over the 37 acres. And keep in mind, there's, you know, we're going to have some detention ponds, there'll be trails, whatever.
So what are your, what are your estimations then for the number of rooftops or number of apartment buildings?
A concept that we have out there is that of the 445, about half will be apartments. This is just, you know, it's now public, but I'm just, you asked a theoretical. And then the other half will be spread out over single-family cottages, because we're trying to get this to where somebody can afford to live in an apartment in their market rate, and then we'll have these other products that somebody can move into a single-family or move into a cottage, or whatever it may be. So about half apartments, and the other half, the rest of the products that we have.
So how many units are you estimating then at that point?
Mr. Butler, do you have a question?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have had a hard time bouncing back and forth from initially when it came back from RM20, just trying to wrap my head around it. And I've had an opportunity to talk to several property owners around there, and I feel like if I can't sell it to myself or sell it to those property owners, I feel I'm doing a disservice. Mr. Cropper called it a premier piece of property. With that road frontage, it's going to be a centerpiece of Fairview when you come through. And so the RM12 designation essentially has given you that, a multifamily, 12 units per acre designation, and that was all you'd be able to build. If you were going to go any single-family, if you're going to go any townhouse, or I guess townhouses are going to multiple, any single-family, you'd have to come back for a rezoning designation or the PUD to try and change it up to have different. And so, and we've had properties that were rezoned to an RM12 back in the day, and 20 years later, a different project came in and adjusted it. And so without knowing the exact intent in use, like a PUD designer thinks, it's hard for me to just say, "High-density, RM12, proceed." We've, we just had a town center overlay submittal. The density on this project is higher than what our town center density would be per acre unit. And so the 2040 comp plan focuses the high densities in the town center, focuses some high-density... some high densities around the interstate corridors, and right now, this piece would have a higher per unit, per acre unit than what our town center, you know, proposal would be. And so it's just hard...
We're spreading it out over the thirty-seven acres. I understand what you're saying, because that's why we're trying to make this towards not just the high density on the apartments. I mean, if, if you want us to come back in and ask for that higher density in an area, then that's the whole point of the POD or the PUD on, on that situation. So you will have that to, to review, and at that point, you can say, yea or nay.
And that's what...
We're just trying to get the, the density in order to make the project work.
The twelve is set in stone forever, and so, and on the commercial current zoning, you could have an RM eight, so you have an eight-unit-per-acre density already that you could take as a multifamily. And that's one of the called-out in the residential, the transition neighborhood in the twenty forty plan. So a transition neighborhood, I kinda see as an idea of you're, you're in a phase from your commercial on your, on your, your main thoroughfare to a little, maybe a little higher density than to the existing neighborhoods that are lower density in the back parcel there. And so that twelve is just the high, and if we just designate it, it's just gonna be four, the RM twelve gives you a right to build four hundred and forty-four apartments, that's it. No single-family, and so I think that's where I can't wrap my head around it just yet, without knowing more detail on it.
Correct me if I'm wrong, its current zoning is, is commercial general, correct? Where, obviously, we're asking for RM twelve. We, where we started that process simply to, to find out what the pleasure of the planning commission as well as the pleasure of the board wanted and would allow from a density standpoint. Our intention was never to go strictly for, uh, four hundred and forty-five apartment units.
But that's what the zoning gives you.
I understand, however, either way we went, in order to get mixed use, we had to go back to a POD. We used the system that existed to try to figure out what our density level, if you will, is or was. Knowing all the time, in order to achieve a product like that, we had to come back and bring it as a POD. Now we know what the density level, for lack of a better word, is. We know that we're at four hundred and forty-five units. Assuming it passes, uh, it did pass the planning commission unanimously, it passed the first reading unanimously. We did pay attention to the, uh, to the planning commission, and they said, no, RM twenty is way more density than we're willing to allow. RM twelve is more likely. We bring it back as RM twelve, we find out we've got four hundred and forty-five potential units, knowing all, all along, that's the product that we're after. Simply, we simply needed to know that number. Now that if we know that number tonight, we'll proceed with a product like that. And that, that had seven hundred and something units in it. It's a good product, if you, for lack of a better word, again. It's a good development, seven hundred and seventy units, or seven hundred and seventy...
I think, I think the number on that plan that I have was like five sixteen or five sixty, one of those two numbers on it.
Yeah, but when we came in for the R twenty, it was gonna allow up to that much, and that's when planning said, no, we, we wanna go down. And so that's all we're, we, we, you're gonna get to look at this plan when it's brought back in, and your point of, well, we're gonna make it R twelve and something else can happen. You, you can look at that plan, and even if it was R twelve in those four forty-five, you can't put, even if you put all those apartments in a couple buildings, that means you're gonna have twenty acres or so of absolute nothing there because of where you're putting them. So that's all we're asking for, is that give us the density, and then you and the public and everybody else can look at the official plan. This is just a concept plan that we came up with, but you will then have the ability to look at that concept plan when it's brought back in here in the next month or so and approve that or not. So that's...
Uh, and I understand the direction you're trying to get, but what you're, you're putting a concept plan in front of me, but you're not asking me to vote on that concept plan.
But you're going to in about a month or so.
But once you go to that twelve, you can, you can completely change. Right now, your commercial gives you the eight-acre unit, the RM eight, and so you have an RM eight currently with a commercial or a commercial use. But if, once we go to RM twelve, you can completely change gears, or the next person who's helped to in a month or two, or if whatever, if something happens, it, it just automatically goes to RM twelve, and the only use for RM twelve is four hundred and forty-four apartments or, or multifamily. And so it, you know, this is in front of us right now, but that is not what we're voting on right now.
That's, that's right, but you'll have the opportunity.
So let me, let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
You're, you're trying to get to a, a number for that property.
That's all we're trying to do, so that, to make the economics.
Did you, did you ever talk to anybody on the board or just to discuss, um, instead of going through this process and wasting time, effort, did you ever come and, and talk to?
Talk to staff all the time, yes.
Okay, or the individual commissioners or to, to, to see, you know, what their, what their thought was on this?
We've had a few conversations, but that's what, that, what we're trying to get is just that number, and then therefore you guys can make the decision when we bring the plan in.
Okay.
We're just trying to do it on the economics. So there'll absolutely be a review on what you can look at.
Okay.
So mayor, I, I still feel like I'm missing, I'm missing something, and maybe, Brandon, maybe you can, or Commissioner Butler, maybe you can help me understand this. So to my point earlier, the request is to rezone tonight and potentially a month. We've gotta sit down and talk about this again and potentially put a POD overlay or whatever, whatever the request would be. Why are we not skipping the request tonight and waiting until we get to that, that POD overlay?
Yeah, your requirements, all your requirements for the POD, there's, there is a tremendous amount of money that has to be spent on a project of this size. You guys as a city make us, Mike, you can help me on this or not, but you make us engineer everything. You make us do all of this before we can even present the POD.
And if we presented a POD with seven hundred and fifty units, after having spent an enormous amount of money, goes to the planning commission, and they say, absolutely not, uh, all we have to go by, I mean, we can, we can visit individual planning commission members, but at the same time, you don't get an answer, you get an answer individually, but you don't get an answer as a body until it's presented. And now we know, okay, we have parameters to work within, we got four hundred and forty-five units that we can work within, and now we can bring back something similar to that scaled down to achieve those four hundred and forty-five units.
So I guess to answer that question, why this isn't presented, is it's, it's, it's a tremendous, I mean, there's already been traffic studies that have been initiated, but to present a POD to the board, I mean, we have to go through full-blown engineering. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a massive undertaking. If it's a small subdivision, that's one thing, but on something like this, that's a tremendous amount of engineering and time and money, and so that's...
So, but you can understand to, and, and to Commissioner Butler's point, I think, is that we rezone this, let's say it rezones tonight, and you come back and the, that POD overlay is not approved. Still in the same boat, right? And so if that POD overlay is not approved, and you decide, okay, well, we can't move forward with this project, let's just sell this property. We're, we're, to, to Commissioner Butler's point, we're, we're there. It's already been rezoned, and so now as a board, we're stuck with whoever you sell to. I'm not saying you're doing that, that's not what I'm even trying to imply. I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Butler, and I'm a little nervous about approving something that I don't, what am, what am I really approving tonight, is I guess, a concept?
You're approving that we can put up to four hundred and forty-five units on that thirty-seven acres, is what you're approving. And then there will be a full plan submitted to you in the next month or so that you will then vote on, and we can't do any more than four hundred and forty-five.
Now, when you say four hundred and forty-five units, that includes individual, single-family homes?
Yeah, that was the question earlier, yes. I mean, of the four forty-five, half of them are gonna be apartment buildings. The other half is gonna be the concept you see here, single-family, some townhomes, some cottages.
But in an RM twelve district, you could not build a single-family product without rezoning or a POD or a POD overlay?
And that's what we would have to bring is, is bring that back in. We're trying to get this so we know approximately how many units we're gonna do. There's ground out there all the time. There's plans put together, there's twenty acres, how many can we put on there? We don't know. If there's ground outside of town somewhere, and we're trying to get finances put in place, we need to know approximately how many units we can put on there. So that's what we're doing now.
To your, to your point, though, if I understood correctly, we're good to go on RM eight at its current zoning. How, what's, how much of it?
All of it.
The, the commercial general district has, can have a standalone multifamily RM eight zoning in it, and our staff is here if they, if I'm incorrect, but...
So that would allow for how many units?
If you have the fifty acres, it'd be eight times, eight times fifty. And we talked about that before, you know, that number, but you said you wanna use some of the front for commercial.
Yeah, and that's what's in your future use plan. Your future use plan has the commercial on there.
On the front side and the transition on the back.
If we took a whole fifty, some acres right now, we would be at about that four hundred units, little over four hundred units.
But you're asking for thirty-seven for, uh, for RM twelve, so it's, it's more dense on the back thirty-seven.
So therefore, we can put commercial on the front, that's in your future use plan.
But, but what I think, what I can tell you about is, this concept plan, in theory, it looks great, but that is not what we're voting on. So the single families, the towns, they may not be there, it's just apartments right now is what you're asking with an RM twelve zoning district.
Trying to get the, we're trying to get the density, yes, sir.
But, and, but like I said, this is a premier piece of property in, in the center of town...
This is a premier development. There's gonna be Class A apartments there.
But all we know right now is RM twelve, you know, that's what's tough. If, if we were more in-depth and detailed in this, we could, you know, dissect it a little bit more, that's just what I can't wrap my head around right now, is just the proximity to our schools, that corridor right there, it, it deserves a little more attention or, or, or combing through than just a zoning designation.
I know, and our alternative is, we just leave a general commercial, and then we just throw four hundred apartments up there and don't do anything.
Would it be a premier development at that point?
I don't know, you tell me.
You just told me it was a premier development, that's...
You're telling me that I can put four hundred units up there right now.
That's the commercial, that would be the zoning you'd ask.
Right. And all we're asking is that we're gonna leave the commercial, as your future use says, and put the single-family and that, we're just looking for that. So, I mean, we can, I, I think at this point, you've made up your mind, so...
So, Mr. Butler, at the current zoning, he can put what in there?
An RM eight is an acceptable use in commercial general district, so eight units per acre. It's a little over fifty acres or so.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two acres total. So that would use the entire parcel. The request is for the back thirty-seven to be RM twelve.
Right, yes, but if it's an, what it is, if what it's zoned currently, he could put how many multifamily, how many apartment buildings could he put in that if the zoning stays what it is now?
Uh, eight times fifty-two, like four sixteen or something.
And the zoning he's asking for would be?
Four forty-five.
Would be four forty-five.
On thirty-seven acres.
On thirty-seven acres, and still the whole fifty-two.
And then thirteen acres or fifteen acres on the front of commercial.
Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Some of the neighbors have come to me and asked about a term that's being thrown around called workforce housing. Can you explain that?
We do nothing but market-rate housing, market-rate apartments. So the market sets the price for the work.
So no, nobody's ever mentioned that?
Uh, there, there's a term out there for workforce housing, there's multiple terms you can call it. Ours is market rate, the term workforce is market rate, but it's just a different term. It's nothing subsidized or anything else, it's...
I, I didn't ask that, I'm just asking what that term means.
I understand, but I know where it's going because it's been floated around out there. So all I'm saying is that workforce housing is market-rate housing, it's the same thing. It's for people that work, it's for policemen, it's for teachers.
It's for the glue that holds the country.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, there's no difference between market wa, market rate and workforce, zero.
And what, explain to me how the sewer's gonna work out there?
Oh, we're connecting to Dixon Water Authority. Did I, did I answer that, or?
Okay.
No, I mean, if you, if you want more detail, there's, there's a man that's, that'll be hooked up to on their, on their gravity basin.
Okay, I mean, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah.
I ask what people ask me to ask.
Absolutely. There, there will not be any, there won't be ten acres set aside or anything else, it's hooked up directly to the sewer system.
Okay, and again, the main concern is the RM twelve with no plan. I mean, we have other developments in the, um, I guess our vision going forward, we would like to have the community and the developers and the board and the planning commission all involved in planning something this big, instead of it just coming as a blanket, RM twelve and not having a plan. I think that's where...
And you will have that plan, is what I'm saying.
Well, but not right now.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion? I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Item number ten, um, second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning thirty-seven point one-four acres of property located at twenty-four fifty-one Fairview Boulevard, Williamson County, Tennessee, tax map zero four six, part of parcel zero eight seven point zero zero. Owner, estate of Laura Catherine Sullivan, agent, Choto Creek Holdings LLC. Motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Am I saying aye to deny? I'm sorry, aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Ten B, annexation, annexation of land property on Northwest Highway, we will now open the public hearing. If you're here to speak to that, please come forward. Tell us your name and your address.
So hard. Um, my name is Susan Morrison, and I live at seventy-two fifty Northwest Highway. Um, and, um, first of all, I want to say thank you for the commissioners and the job you guys do. Um, I didn't look it up, but I don't think you get paid very much, and you filled a lot of questions and emails, and you have to listen to people like me come up here and yak. And so I almost stayed home tonight to talk to some neighbors, and I went, I don't think it's gonna make any difference, you know, what we say or do, it's not gonna have any bearing on the outcome of tonight's vote, but, um, you know, some of us showed up. I just, uh, I think that's important, you want citizens involved, and so here we are. Um, concerning the property on Northwest Highway that's up for rezoning and annexation, um, you know, I don't wanna stand up here and block something. Norman has been my, my neighbor for forty-two years. Uh, if, I don't want to make his life harder or anything like that. Um, I am concerned about growth, it's a common theme, you know, you, you guys have heard it all before. Rezone this, I would like to see, you know, five-acre lots, that'd be great, twenty houses down there, great. I can make that adjustment, I have before, I've lived here for, you know, forty years. Um, you know, in reality, it will probably, the request is, I think, for one-acre lot, so that's hundred houses. Little bit harder, you know? The property around there, most of my neighbors have got two-acre lots, the people who actually live there. I mean, you're gonna say, when you look at the neighborhood, there was a huge POD that was approved fifteen years ago, right, right before the market crashed. None of you were commissioners then, it's all, the POD is like six hundred and fifty houses, I think. It's scary. It hasn't happened, but it can, and it probably will, but you add that and two hundred houses here, and then across the street, we're, that will come back for a request to annex again, I'm sure. You know, I guess my point is, if we could keep the property in the, the vein in what it looks like now, which is about two acres, it would, to me, to me, that's low density, I don't know... two acres, it would, to me, to me, that's low density. I don't know. I know that's not the definition of low density. I think low density definition is like one half acres. But at any rate, this week, I watched out my kitchen window, Middle Tennessee Electric cut down a line of trees right out my window. I've looked at them for 40 years and that was hard. There was a 100-year-old tree and it took them 45 minutes to cut it down. It was gone. And I have it on videotape because I don't know why, but I'm just saying, there are some people in the city who actually grieve the loss of the farmland and the trees and all that, you know. But I understand. People have to have a place to live, you know, just be careful, you know. Let's, let's keep it a desirable place to live. I want my kids to want to move back here and not just not be able to afford to, but I want them to want to. So that's the real sting when they say, okay, Mom, I'm not sure I want to move back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, during a public hearing, there's no, there's no time limit. And I'm driving Chief Humphrey's nuts because he keeps telling me that people's three minutes are up. So I wanted to clear that up with him. Go ahead. Your name and your address.
Brandt and Kim Rohr. We are at 7259 Northwest Highway. We saw the sale happen of this property, saw the annexation signs going up. This is the first time we've ever been to one of these, but we wanted to get up and just share our thoughts about it and let you know, as a neighbor of this property, the feeling. We moved here eight years ago from Minnesota, bought our house without even seeing it because we drove down the northern border of this property along Northwest Highway under the canopy of trees and then turned the corner and saw the house and bought it. And then at that time, eight years ago, the housing market was super hot and we had to do it. We are in a development. The last eight houses that hit the eastern edge of this property as well are all two acres. This, our 40, you're looking at one acre lots. It's not keeping with the look of heading that far out of the city limits. I'd really like you to look at at least an R80 where it's two acres that matches the feel of the country setting out there. Still 50-plus homes. Also, this 114 acres is 94 on one side of Northwest Highway and 20 acres on the opposite side. Fell in love with this area. Putting 100 more homes right at the end of our street, less than, you know, 600 feet away, quiet road, our kids are safe on the road riding their bikes. 100 more homes is going to. Haven't been on Northwest Highway. It's already extremely narrow, all the way from Cox Pike all the way to 96. And I would just like to see what the plan is from the developers on what they want to do with these 114 acres. If you haven't seen anything, it'd be nice to see that.
Previously, someone mentioned. They mentioned if, if they build these houses, if they need to put in turn lanes, we'll add them, like whatever we're required to do, we'll do. I think that's specifically what we're afraid of because that impacts our lifestyle and our land. Like you said, our road is really narrow and so that would take away part of our land to make a busier road, to make our lifestyle worse. So I just want to say this small country town is different and better than anything that I have ever known and it has treated us very well. We love and invest in our town and our neighborhood and our neighborhood specifically is our family. We spend holidays together. Fairview is standing at the fork in the road, ready to move ahead into a new time as Middle Tennessee grows at a rapid rate. What we need to be thinking about is what road we want to end up on. That should lead us into what specific steps that we take right now to lead us into the direction to be the type of town that we decide that we want to be. We just love it here. We just wanted to stay this charming, small town country feel. We don't want to deny anyone else. We're from Minnesota. We moved down here. We don't want to deny other people to enjoy this town, but we just want to do it responsibly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
Hello, I'm Johnny McDaniel, 7273 Northwest Highway. I don't have anything, no notes, no formal preparations, but I'm looking for maybe a little more thoughtfulness, a little more exercise of common sense with the direction this project's going. Looks like to me, now I'd spoken with the developer and I don't have a problem with him or what he told me he's planning to do, $700,000 to $900,000 homes, close to three quarters of an acre each, not much short of that, if any, he said. And, okay, a developer's got to make some money and it's got to be dense enough to do that. And homes like that really could upgrade the area and I understand that and be good revenue for Fairview as well. But in the process, it really was disturbing to see those trees cut because, okay, I know the engineers are going to say, well, we need power over there. We got to put more power lines, bigger ones, this and that. Well, instead of changing the whole character of a neighborhood that people have invested their lives in and built nice homes and, and community there, they could use underground utilities. It's not a long stretch. You're not even talking about a half a mile, but to exercise easements into these yards, to cut these trees, to put these ugly overhead lines, bigger ones, I understand, just to get to a half a mile to the development where they're going to have underground utilities? Why not start it early and finish it in that way and do no, no real damage to the integrity of the neighborhood's appearance? Now, that's a small thing, a small request. That would be a good compromise. Growth has to happen. You want positive growth. You want to upgrade the area if you're going to do something, but you don't have to tear down the effect of what is already there in the appearance and, well, the homes and the neighborhood that people have invested 20 to 40 years in building and maintaining. And that's what they're doing right now.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak on this? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Is the developer here to talk about some of the concerns and tell us what you're planning?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Nathan McVay with T-Square Engineering. So we're requesting annexation of this piece. As it comes in, it'll be a base zone of RS40, so 40,000 square foot lots. It's currently zoned MGA1, but it's in the UGB. If it happens to fail tonight, it could be developed under the county regulations just as one acre lots. So the same density would be gotten under the county regulations. The Water Authority of Dixon County will provide water and sewer for this parcel. The portion that's kind of northeast there of Northwest Highway, that has some good soils, so that has the potential of being a step system if you decide to go decentralized on the site. And as you can see, Northwest Highway does have three 90-degree turns. And so we're in some preliminary discussions in helping out with straightening up Northwest Highway and making that a safer road and a better through street there for the city. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
I just have one. So at this point, so you said that if you stay, if it stays in the county, you can build one acre lots.
That's correct.
If you annex into the city of Fairview, you can build one acre lots.
Yes, sir.
Why do you want to annex into the city? Or I just go ahead and build now?
I think the city, I think it allows us to do more with Water Authority Dixon County versus going individual septic or decentralized. You know, being able to hook up to city sewer from Dixon helps out a lot. Then, you know, working with the city on connecting that Northwest Highway road and making it better, I think it tends to lay out better than just to stack the same amount of lots there on the dangerous Northwest Highway that was mentioned before.
But I would imagine you could do some of that with or without the annexation, correct?
Well, it's a city road, so we'd have to have city permission. So I doubt, it's easier to do coordinations with the city when you're in the city.
I would think if anybody wanted to come to the city and help us fix a road, we probably would listen. I'm just guessing.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The gentleman said that he had talked to the builder and the builder was going to build, use three-quarter acre lots.
Well, it'd be 40,000 square foot lots. That's the minimum. So they will be in accordance with the zoning ordinance. So three-quarters wouldn't quite get you there. So they'd be 40,000 square foot. It'd be in accordance with the base zone.
How many total lots are currently on the preliminary?
On the preliminary, I think we're at like 66 right now. As you can see, that grove of trees that kind of starts southwest and kind of curves upward toward the middle, there's a portion of stream in there, so it's been buffered and then there's some topo. So, you know, you kind of lose what's in the middle there. So even though it's one per acre, 94 lots there, with the conditions we have, I think we're looking at 66 roughly.
And then just to reiterate, so the MGA1 is the current Williamson County zoning. So it's in the urban growth boundary for the city of Fairview. The municipal growth area one is one acre per lot. So you could essentially go and take the same project into the county. Instead, you brought it to the city. There's been preliminary discussion of possibly adjusting northwest to connect to Dice Lampli to kind of straighten it out, road improvements there, possibly abandoning the current, the current north side northwest to be able to keep that look of those trees and that canopy and to not remove those to widen that tree there and kind of make some improvements in that area. And then also, of course, if you do build one acre lots, we wouldn't get tax dollars in the future if they're in the county. If it's in the city, we would get tax dollars. And with our inter-local agreement, our police and fire are going to serve that project either way, whether it's going to be our city or our county servicing out there. So that's just kind of the, some of the pluses of, it currently could have one acre. And then the Williamson County Growth Plan calls out this area as where the designated growth should go from the city corridor. And then our, our Fairview 42040 plan calls this area out. And so one acre lots are going to be some of the, I think, the largest lots currently being submitted and I hope would keep some of the stately feel. I think some of the perimeter lots in that drawing I saw were bigger than one acre that are going to face the current northwest. So there's going to be some lots on around the perimeter that I was told anywhere from one to three acres in size, I think. Is that correct?
That's correct. And along the Dice Lampli, which kind of goes south, west, southwest there.
Any other discussion from the board?
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want everybody to understand, like what Commissioner Butler said, is right now, there can be one acre lots built on that property. And if we bring it into the city, there's, they're asking for 66 homes on 114 acres and some of those lots are larger than one acre. But that money, that those tax dollars would come into our city instead of the county building the one acre lots and staying in the county and not to our city. So that, that is, you know, that's important, I think.
Any other discussion from the board?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the resolution, please.
Resolution 14-21, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee with R40, single-family residential low-density zoning, 114 acres, map 021, parcel 062.00 and 063.00. Property owners, Northwest Cove LLC. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Sorry. Go ahead. Commissioner Dawson?
Just wanted to tell everybody that did come up to speak tonight, we appreciate you coming and speaking in front of the board. Many people do sit at home and they don't get up here and talk to us. We want you to speak to us. We want you to reach out to us, to call us on the phone, to send emails. And we do care. We care about keeping Fairview as that small, close-knit community. We know that there's going to be growth in the city of Fairview. We don't want it to be like our sister cities, Thompson Station and Spring Hill, where we are outgrowing our infrastructure. We are always very concerned about that. When we look at the traffic on 100, when we look at the traffic on 96, we're very cognizant. So once again, I just wanted to tell you, thank you for coming out tonight and voicing your opinion and please reach out to us at any time. We would love to talk to you about it and we appreciate you coming and voicing your concerns.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to try and answer all the questions that were mentioned, Ms. Morrison and Mr. McDaniel. I'm not sure about the power line cuts. I'm going to ask that question. I don't think it would pertain particularly to this. Middle Tennessee Electric is, you know, constantly making future improvements of how they're going to access or where they're going to access. They're increasing to three-phase, which is a higher district length. So I don't know if this, if the extension's already running for this or not, but I'm going to ask the local engineer just what's going on out there and that, what improvement projects going on out there.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
You sound like you're in the middle of a sentence when you quit talk.
I do that often. I'm sorry.
Is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nay.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C, commercial zoning, commercial zoning designations. There's a public hearing on this. Is there anyone here to speak on that? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Vice Mayor, if you'll read the ordinance, please.
Second and final reading of ordinance 2021-15, an ordinance to amend Article 8 of the city zoning ordinance for the purpose of establishing defined commercial zoning districts. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Ms. Johnson?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
New business, 11A, resolution 1521, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee to install traffic calming and control devices within the city of Fairview. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floors. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're just seeing if we're paying attention, aren't you? Item B, resolution 16-21, a resolution authorizing the Fire Department of Fairview, Tennessee to participate in public entity partner, safety partners matching grant program.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, can we have the fire chief come up and just talk a little bit about that?
Mayor Commissioners, this is a grant program that we've been participating in for several years with our insurance company. What it is, we're allowed to participate in a matching grant. We usually get turnout gear for it. Basically, we buy one set of turnout gear, they buy one. So we get two sets of turnout gear to, for the price of one, basically through their safety program. Our turnout gear has a 10-year lifespan. We have to put it out of service at 10 years. Most of the time, for a full-time firefighter, that gear's probably going to last five, maybe six years. So even though we can run it for 10 years, it usually doesn't hold up for 10 years on someone that's full-time on our staff.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, how much is that turnout gear?
Head to toe turnout gear, we're at about $3,500. Head to toe turnout gear, we're at about $3,500 per outfit. So it's, it's a $3,500 matching grant is basically what it is. I think there's actually a cap on it at $3,000. So we, we don't, it's not one for one necessarily, but it depends on the cost of the turnout gear and if we buy a helmet and a set of boots with it also.
Any other questions?
So the insurance company pays for the gear?
It's their safety pro, their safety grant program. They match funds. It's, it's almost like the same as the federal grant. We put in money, they match the rest. The state forestry also does a similar grant that we participate in every year also. But it's part of, they've also got a, a security grant that puts in, that allows for infrastructure as far as fencing gates, things like that. There are several grants that Public Partners does for public safety.
But the grant money comes straight from them or do they write the grant and the grant money comes from somewhere else? I'm, I'm just curious how it all works.
I'm not sure who, whose name's on the check that we get, but basically we turn in the invoice for the gear. They pay for one set, we pay for one set. Basically, kind of how it works out up to a, a matching, there is a cap on it. We couldn't buy $10,000 worth of gear and they buy 10,000. It's, it's one, easily works out to one set for us. So, and for us, we use it for gear. We could buy any kind of, anything that had to do with public safety. If, if we needed something else, gear just seems to be what works for us. But we could, we could buy other products with it if we decided to that made our personnel's job safer.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hearing none. Call for the vote. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 12, communications from mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and congratulations and thank you to the staff for, for that July 3rd event. Human tremendous success. That's all I have.
Mr. Dawson?
Yeah, once again, just to echo about, about the July 3rd event, just a, an amazing display of coordination. Just a, an amazing time for the community to come together at the city of Fairview. I think we certainly needed that. And just to see all the kids and all of the smiling faces was just a blessing. So thank you to the city staff for everybody that was part of organizing that event. It was great. Also want to thank the community for coming out tonight. Every time you here, it, it helps us make good, strong decisions for our community. So, thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you to all the, the staff, the vendors, the sponsors for the July 3rd event, all the citizens that came out. Really is one of the best events, I think, that we do. I think everybody had a great time. I got more Rubik's cubes at my house laying around than I care to mention. But just a great event. So thank you to all that put that on. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Thank you. That 3rd of July celebration was very needed after a year of us all staying at home and, you know, going through the COVID situation. And it was so exciting to see so many people out there and thank you to everyone who sponsored, was involved in, helped with any part of this July 3rd celebration. It, I, I, I mean, I heard nothing but wonderful comments. I just want to let everyone know, we, I mean, I'm going to speak for myself. I know the others as well. But I take everything that everyone calls me about and talks to me about to heart. And I just want you to know that I don't take anything that we vote on lightly. And I try to do always what's best for our community. And I reason out why I make the decisions I do when I vote the way I do. It means everything to me that y'all come out and, and talk to us about this and, and call us during the week, during, during the two weeks before the meeting and, you know, try to, we try to get the answers that, you know, that will answer the questions you have. I don't take anything, any vote lightly. So I just, I just want you all to know that. Let's just keep our community beautiful and pick up the trash and don't throw it out. So, thank you.
I also want to echo everyone's sentiments about July 3rd. And I sent this to the department heads. So if some of the staff didn't see it, we were sitting close to a family that had a little girl and she had been busy all night doing little girl stuff. And during the fireworks, she said, this is my best day ever. So that was, you know, that was the true endorsement of the whole event. So, thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.